Hello everybody, can you hear me? Hello everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hold on, we hear you. Okay, let's go. Hey, hey there. Welcome to another edition of Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. And with my co-host Francis Larkin and Ladonna Sherwood. Hello ladies.
Hello.
Great, great. We've going to have our special guest tonight Stacy Lewis running for District 2, BISD Beaumont Elementary School District, District 2. He's running for that position there and we'll be right back. And guys, did you enjoy your Thursday show?
I enjoyed it.
It was great, great.
I hate, I missed it.
Good talk.
We had so much going on Thursday.
Yeah.
I know, I hate, oh, I hate missing it.
Good talk. We had great talk. We've got great guests coming up. We've got, we've got a lot of guests coming up. We are almost just, we're actually, we're actually adding a Thursday night show this month, Francis. So we're gonna do Sundays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays at eight o'clock.
And you'll get to talk tonight too, because I'm a little bit busy, but I'll be here with you guys.
Yes, so we've got a heavy, heavy march of podcasting. So now, with that said, I think I need to also let people to know that the Texas Rent Release Program is still going on. You need to, you buy it on your rent. You can apply at texasrentrelease.com and they will pay up to three months of your rent to get you back on your feet again.
And we want to remind everybody that every Wednesday, we are gonna be at Nail Sports Bar with a candidate meeting greet. And I'm excited about that.
All right, great, great. So I'll, hey, believe it or not, I made two wins tonight for fair event.
I planned on getting here Wednesday.
She had some good chili. That chili was off the chain. Oh yeah, that cornbread, ooh, Lord, I almost didn't go home. I thought I followed her home with that, that good cookie. Hey, we knew.
Let's remind the people too, Tony, what is Knowledge is Power Platform, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live?
Yeah, I'll let you go with it. Go ahead.
Yes.
That's the right one, yes.
That's the right one. Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is a platform to share important information by educating Southeast Texas African-American communities with valuable information on health, education, finances, politics, and business. Honey, we pride ourselves on keeping our hand on the pulse of this community, keeping you up to date on everything that is happening in and around the Golden Triangle. Let's go, Tony.
Within thirty minutes, we will be right back with our guest Stacy Lewis. And also, I also remind you that Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is now on Facebook, Spotify, iHeartRadio, YouTube, LinkedIn, Twitter, Apple iTunes, and Google Play, and a lot more. So we're all over the place. Join us at any time and watch us as we roll with the punches. And now, in thirty minutes, thirty seconds, I'll be right back with our guest Stacy Lewis. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your host Tony Redfro and my co-host Ladonna Sherwood and Francis Larkin.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
All right, we're back. Hey, our guest Stacy Lewis. Hello Stacy.
Hey, Mr. Redfro. Hey, Ms. Larkin. Hey, Ms. Sherwood. It's a pleasure to be on the show today. I'm happy and I'm excited. Thank you for this opportunity.
We are happy to have you. You know I'm excited. Let's get it.
Okay, well, get going, girls. I'm going to program the show to get Stacy in here and you got it.
Well, I'll ask the first question. I'm gonna just jump right in, Mr. Lewis.
First of all, we gotta let anyone know Stacy's running what position Stacy?
Okay.
Okay.
Stacy Lewis Jr. and I'm running for BISD trustee District 2.
All right.
Okay, well, well, tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, where you from, what prompted you to run for the school board? Just so our, our listeners can get to know you a little bit better for those that don't, I don't, I can't imagine who wouldn't, but go ahead.
Stacy Lewis Jr., I'm a community servant from Beaumont, Texas, been here my whole life. With the exception of the six years I spent away being in New Jersey by way of military. Also, I pursued my cosmetology and barber license that way. And soon after Hurricane Harvey, I came back. What I mean, I'm a community servant is I've been volunteering since I was a young boy. And if anybody knows my father, who has a Sterling Product Activity Center, I've been his right-hand man in helping with everything city-oriented. You see me various places where I come for hurricane relief. I'm always the one who out there in the fatigues, you know, that's me. And I plan on to continue on doing that for people. And just moving now into the school board.
What prompted you to run for school board opposed to any other city position?
Well, I think really, school board has been neglected. It's kind of been that that sword that we kind of, we, we notice there, but we don't want to do anything about it. However, BISD in my opinion is the most pivotal part of the city. And what I mean by that is because we got seventeen thousand young kids that are gonna end up being our future leaders. And if we ever want to see any kind of change in Beaumont, changes with our little people. And what prompted me to do that is when I came from New Jersey, I went straight into the school district, substituted, I work and I volunteer and mentor young kids. And I see that, man, there's a change from the time that I graduated to what times look like now. And if we ever want to see the change, as I spoke already about, we have to do it with our children. I think, you know, it's, it's the ideal position to be in. One, it's fully voluntary, you don't get paid a red cent. And, you know, secondly, with that, man, you, you, you really don't understand how many lives and, and what kind of change you can do until you see those same little kids that were five, ten, fifteen years old and they grow up to be these productive people they are now in the city and go on, go do great things out in the world.
Absolutely. Well, I couldn't agree with you more. Our youth is definitely the foundation to our, to our community. That's, that's what keeps our community, community and our legacy continuing. So it's good, it's good to hear and refreshing that you have that mindset. So what are some of your goals, some of your plans that you possibly could speak on this evening?
Let me chime in just a little bit, Francis. I just want to know, can you tell us what, what area is District 2 before you tell us your, tell us where, where, what area does that encompass or schools inside of that area or things like that?
So I can do you one better. We're gonna list off, there's five, consists of five schools, which is Lucas Pre-K, Martin Elementary, Homer Drive, GS Elementary, and May Jones Clark. For those who live in District 2, there'll be precincts 1, 8, 22, 23, 63, 77, 87, and 88. And for our geographical people, we're gonna just say we're gonna go in North End of Beaumont from I-10 freeway. And we're gonna head out towards Concord and 105. We're gonna lead all the way back out into Plant Road and ride 105 out. And everything to you visually riding in the car with me is to the right, that's all District 2.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you, that was all elementary schools. Does that explain to us, is that because of the geographical area, there's no middle schools or high schools in that area? That's why only elementary schools were listed or what's going on with that?
Yes, and also no. There is one, one particular spot, a part of that route that actually consists of Smith Middle School that does not belong to District 2. So Smith Middle School, to us, would make sense that it would be included in District 2. However, it's not. It's part of District 3.
And does that have anything to do with the zoning?
Everything, everything to do with the zoning and getting into analytics is trying to chop up twenty-four thousand people and change into five different districts.
But I wanted to kind of clarify for the people because there are middle schools in that district that are not included in that district. For example, like you said Concord in this area back and blah, 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 but that is a part of District 3 for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I'm sorry Francis, go ahead with the.
No, 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 that's fine because that, that is something that we definitely need to know. I think that's super important moving forward so that we can position our minds to receive what you have to say about what your plans are. Because I'm quite sure your planning has everything to do with the zoning and the stu-, you know, the students and the constituents that you would serve. So tell us, yeah, tell us a little bit about what your plans are, like what are some of your key or your capstone plans that you have if elected or when elected?
Okay, aside from working together as a member of a team, which I got from my military background, really, it's, it's to make sure that we invest into our, into our future, into our kids. So we exploring the interests and the ideas of them. And then we actually start to implement changes and programs for their liking. One thing we have is kids who they wanna, they don't want to come to school and that is, that is evident by their attendance numbers. But my biggest issue is that when we have them there, what are we doing to keep them there and make them want to keep coming back to school? Ultimately, I think we all, we can all say that we want to turn C, D, and F schools into A and B schools, which definitely makes sense because this also brings in more business and more people want to end up flooding the city when they see a progressive and a performing school district. But really at this, but for, for my junk, I'm really invested in making sure that we explore the ideas and the interests of our children, but also that we're taking care of our most valuable asset, which is our teachers.
Okay.
And a lot of the teachers have a bunch of things to say at this juncture. Explain to us, how do you feel that the teachers are being treated? And what would you suggest implementing to improve and retain certified credential teacher?
Well, for a long time now, teachers have been having the issue where they feel like they have no administrative support. They feel like they're the, the monkey in the middle where they having to deal with administration, administrative issues, having to deal with behavioral problems for our children and getting lack their support from the parents. And so, really, I think the best thing that a board member can do if elected is hear, hear just out and list, and, 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 and list out the problems that they have and then come up with a comprehensive plan to prioritize and knock them all off. Really, for me, I want BISD to be the most innovative district, but also I want morale to be up. I want morale to be up for the people who work there, which is our educators who comprise the most of the budget. And also, I want it to be where where, where the students, they're just happy to come to school because they know that they, they're not only gonna get an education, but what they want to be or what they're tied to in life, that they get the opportunity to do just that.
Now, I got a question about the virtual learning given the current condition with COVID and everything that is going on. Students are suffering when they're being, having to be taught at home. You know, some of us from their parent, one generation, we, we was at home struggling. And then you had people that really wanted the kids to go back to school and people that didn't want the kids to go back to school. Virtual learning have been, I'm talking about for like elementary students and, and, and middle school, it's been really hard. What, what is your stance on the virtual situation?
Man, with, with, there's always conflict with change. Anything that's new, you're gonna have issues, you're gonna have troubleshooting, troubleshooting issues with it. So, one, I actually do like the virtual aspect of it. Reason why is because we, we, we actually probably bring in more students to BISD because we were formerly had homeschool students. And homeschool students suffer from not being able to play sports, not to be able to be in extracurricular activities and things of that nature. So I think it's gonna be able to increase our enrollment numbers. Secondly, because COVID does exist, there are parents that do have that preferential tree, does have the preference of saying, hey, well, I do want to have my kid at home. Or I work from home and it works for me and my schedule. Because all these things, it, it saves money, it saves time. You don't have to go anywhere, you don't have to pick anywhere and up, things become more streamlined. But we do have the glaring issue where attendance is hard to maintain. And also, kids just getting up and, and, and being engaged in it. And because we also have, we have different ways of learning. We have by hearing, by doing, and by seeing. And for virtual learning, you're not hands-on, you're not doing anything, you're not messing with blocks, you're not writing down anything, you're just watching. And there's, you know, that's one-third of the way of learning. So we, we gotta, we gotta make sure that we hone in on the kids that it works for. And for the kids that are not extraordinary in that, that we house them and we do, we, we do regular school with them. Virtual is gonna be great in the future because it's gonna help us also lower, I'm sorry, reduce our classroom sizes, which is an issue that we have this year wide.
I, I, I'm sorry Francis, but I got, since we're on the topic of virtual.
No, 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 this is a great topic.
When you say bringing kids back to school, you know, Stacy, this is one of my things that's near and dear to me. I'm, I'm all with the virtual and the COVID and I'm under stress, so I got a bunch of questions on this. Now, when you say reduce the class size, when, what is BISD actually? Or do you know perhaps the plan is for mitigating the COVID? Are they gonna increase COVID testing? Or are they gonna change the filtration systems in the school to, with the, you know, fresh air and things of that nature? Or are they going to reduce class sizes and have more teachers when they do bring kids back to school? Like, we don't want to still see twenty and thirty to one ratios when it's COVID. Like, how, what, what are the COVID precautions for when they go back to school? Because everybody's not vaccinated and it's not over. So did BISD do any building changes or any class size changes or things of that nature? Or do they plan to?
I'm not, I'm not a board member, so I'm just, I'm gonna say that. So I don't know what they're actively talking about. And I just know that what we're talking about is, you know, post-May 1st, if I'm elected, what, what implements or what changes are I'm trying to implement from, from my seat. And I believe in, you know, making sure that we utilize our virtual ease so that way we can make sure that we have reduced class sizes until we get into opportunity. I mean, because I mean, we, we, we're dealing with fixed structures in a non-COVID world. I mean, I believe in changing the filtration system more often. Also believe in utilizing, you, you have to move the kids around and in and out of class in order to properly sanitize. So I mean, kids should be coming into a classroom that's properly sanitized. And then when they, when they transition during the day between going to lunch and going to recess or recreational time, that they get another opportunity to have a sanitized room. So I, I can't speak about what they're doing now, but we do know there's some, there's some heroes that should be more lovable now. That's our custodian workers because two, for school is not gonna work on, on, on a given shift. You know, we need more than like four to five because they, they have to be, they have to be turning. You know, going, going to class and have comprehensive schedule to make sure that these type of things are working. I, I'm not sure what the current protocols are with regards to checking, checking temperatures upon entry or anything else. Because I mean, that, that can be a few things. Kids can still have a fever or run a cold. And it doesn't have to be symptoms of COVID. It can just be kid got sick, you know. But just making sure that we have hand sanitizer and sanitary, sanitary supplies on hand and that not the teacher is having to utilize it, but having staff and employees to make sure that they're doing it.
That's, that's a great response. Um, as far as keep, my, my whole focus is always retaining and keeping the talent here because I know you were talking about students and how they are the foundation for our community. I'm an advocate for this community. I, I wasn't born, born or raised here, but I've been here for some time. So how, how, or what, what is your goals? I know that you mentioned basically keeping, you know, getting our students more engaged and wanting them to actually, you know, come to school, be excited about learning. Do you have a plan in place or have an idea of how, starting at such a young age? Because I, I hear a lot of elementary schools in your, I guess would be your district. What would be your goals or do you have a plan to retain that talent once your plans are implemented? Have you, are you looking that far down the line to keep those students here? Is there any type of structuring or is there any type of engagement that you could see that you might want to implement to make sure that once your great plan is in place, those students stay here in Beaumont and give their talents back to Beaumont?
Absolutely. And that's when we call out all business owners. We call out all influential people, you know, we have, you know, we have Lamar University, we have Exmo, we have Motive right down the road. We have so, so many businesses, I mean, I mean, talking about billion-dollar businesses here housing Beaumont. And it's the recruiting portion and also adding a CTE, which is career technology education into our high schools and also we can integrate them into our middle schools. And what this does is, man, we actually streamlining the, 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 the job progression. So we're, we're, you know, we're showing kids, here's where you want to be, things that you want to do. Well, how we go further with the next step where it's, it's getting that, that training and that certificate program already implemented in-house. So upon graduation, guess what? You have a job right now working down the street and you don't have to go look and see what's in Houston, what's in Baytown, what's in Austin, anywhere else galore. I see, that, that part, that's, that's our village mindset. And we want to keep all our resources, keep all our talents here in-house in Beaumont. So Beaumont has to be reinvested into Beaumont and that comes through BISD.
Okay, okay, great. Ladonna? I think she's not there. But is there anything else that you would like to convey? Is there another message you, that is near and dear to you that you want to, you know, basically communicate to our audience that's listening tonight?
I was about to say my mic.
That's okay, that's okay. We got time.
Yes, so anybody who lives here in Beaumont, who does business, who works here or whatnot, you, you have a social responsibility and so do I. It, it's senseless for me to, to only care about myself and not care about what the future of Beaumont is gonna look at, uh, look like. Like, I'm thirty years old and, and I plan to do specific work for the next twenty years. And I have to ask myself today, if, if I choose to be absent, does that mean that I'm okay with the current rate of Beaumont and the progression that we make? Or am I gonna sit here and be a change agent to make sure that I can see what the next generation will look like? Anybody's looking to elect me by May 1st and I assume the position, do you know that whenever I take seat, that it would take me fourteen years to see a change from the first generation of kids that come in through BISD? So just saying at that rate, I would be forty-four years before I'd have had the first graduating class from the first time I, I, I implemented any kind of change. And that's what we're voting on and, and that's, and, and, and because that piece right there is so important to me, I want other people to understand that as well, that if any business owner, partner, if you come in, that, that group of kindergartens that you choose to inspire, you won't see return on investment until about fourteen years from now. So ask yourself, find a way out. Because every year, every day, every month, you miss out on the opportunity to change, especially if you have that power, you have the resources to, to implement change. Why sit there and hold your talents away from it?
Well, I want to know what separates you from other candidates. Why should we choose you?
Thing easy answer is that, one, I'm investing in Beaumont, I'm boots on the ground, I'm ready willing to work, I have connection with my community and also with the city. I make myself accessible, you know, and not just by my phone or email or Facebook, but also make myself accessible by showing up and being there. I attend all schoolwork meetings, I'm there mingling, talking with people. Want to know what is the interest of the community and I'm gonna fight for you. And that's what it is. I, I think it'd be a big disservice to everything that my ancestors have done for me, for me to sit here and, and be silent and, and, and not fight for what the next generation needs. You know, definitely we're gonna take care of the wants, but I want to make sure that we give these kids everything that they deserve. I think some people may not like the current state of Beaumont and guess what? I've, I've been here and staying here and I don't plan to move. And I, I plan to be that change agent for everyone that, that you can actually see fit. I mean, I want you to look at it three years down the line and you want to say, man, Stacy's been there. But I'm also so humble enough to know that if I was not the guy, that I would still be here helping. And I just ask you to, if you feel that I'm not the guy, do you believe in the next one?
Well, that's a great, 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 great answer. And I think you have great point of views and I think you have a great plan for our city, for our kids, which is, oh, like I mentioned, oh, so important. So how do you plan on getting your people out to vote? What actually are you doing to make sure people are making it to the polls this go-round?
Well, we, we, I'm sorry, we utilizing our platforms. So everybody has a platform. Everybody has people that, that, that they have vested interest into it. And so when, when you, you encourage those and inspire those people to utilize their little celebrity and pass that information over, also in, in, in terms, I mean, I'm boots on the ground and, and I mean, in a most literal fashion. I'm out in neighborhoods, knocking on doors, putting up door hangers, letting people know that April nineteenth is the start of early voting. I'm constantly sharing information on Facebook and Instagram and Snapchat. Also, man, I've also volunteered my time at the local high school and helped register a handful of kids to vote and, and let them know that they are empowered by that piece of paper. And that, you know, I think maybe about a month ago, they all received their voter registration cards. And as much as that, 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 that makes me happy and make me feel like I did something, I know that the influence that our youth can have on our, our seasoned, our, our seasoned citizens. And some people haven't voted, you know, and they're fifty, sixty years old. But when they see their eighteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old child, grandchild, niece and nephew with a voter registration card, that tells you what time it is. That tells you that, man, look, hey, I, I, I gotta meet, I gotta meet my baby where they at. And, you know, also just, just connecting with other people who's going out and doing the same thing. This is.
And he's a part of my one reaches seven challenge. We all gonna reach somebody. We all gonna call somebody. We all gonna make somebody responsible for somebody else and each one gonna reach one and we gonna push it. That's what we do. That's what we doing. Get out the vote for sure.
Right. And and I believe um even like my last presidential election, uh, I I I chose I chose to be uh kind of a little bit of avant garde to it. Um, I think we all, if we all reach for the same seven, we pretty much touching the same people. Uh, I employ people to go deep in your contact list. And when I say deep, I mean deep, I mean, no people who are borderline uh about to get deleted out of your phone, you know, people in your old seasons. I need you to reach out to those people and and tell them why they their vote matters and why their vote matters even more because these are local elections. These, you know, your your mayors, your your school board trustees, these are tangible people that you can see, talk with, you know, you can get their number. I I can't promise you, you can get President Biden's number, but I guarantee you, if you ask for it, you can get my number. And we can ha- we can have a candid conversation about any in uh any interest that you may have with B I S D progression into the city of Beaumont because we're all one and the same.
I'm super excited.
Y'all flew a little flat tonight. Y'all flew a little flat tonight since I was backstage. Backstage. Yeah, I think y'all ready to get pumped up for this. Wait a minute, Stacy, Stacy Lewis. Stacy's running for District Two and he has an opponent as well. I I, you know, I'm just finding that out about two, three days ago. I thought you was just, you was un- un- unopposed, but you do have a, you do have a uh 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 opponent. But you know, I I was listening to your show. I was backstage just listening and I was working on a few other things that I'm behind on. And uh, so that's why I kind of let my host, my co-host take over. But Stacy, you know, and I'm gonna say this right now is because hey, and I look at the candidates, not just in uh Beaumont Independent School District, but I'm looking at all the candidates that's running the city elections and um and and I and I was just thinking just today as I was, I attend the uh the candidate forum today at the elegant hotel. And I was just sitting there thinking as I was taking notes, I said, wait a minute. Everybody said the same thing about, you know, uh, we didn't, I I I worked at the community. I um, okay, now what did you do in the community? My question is, what did you do in the community? So i- i- you know, it takes more than someone to hand out water. Every anybody can hand out water to somebody, you know, and yeah. And 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 it takes years and I saw you uh not before you become interested in running as a candidate, but I saw you in the past, working in the communities and that makes a difference, you know? As, you know, like I said, again, everybody can hand out water or school supplies when you want something. I want to see, I want the person that in in the past that has made some effort to put in the community. Uh, like you say, boots on the ground during in the past years, in past time, uh, not just jump up because uh two weeks before uh uh candidate time and say, hey, listen, I want to run. I I think I can, I can be a school, I can be a uh on the school board. No, 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 no. Because I just, I want you to say, I want you to say, let me get it straight. I I appreciate what you have done and you showed me that you have a heart for it and this is what our community needs as a a a board member on the board. We do need new life, we need uh uh integrity, a take it, oh, Lord.
You got you, Tony.
Yeah. But we need someone honest and integrity and be fair about what you're doing, the decision you're making as a school board member. Um, and that means a lot. So um, to me, I I I had to jump in the show because my, it was just kind of too, it was a little bit too lackadaisical there and I need to get it back up again. But Stacy, um, tell me this, uh, what are your plans? What 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 make you so different from the rest of the those who's running for office? Yeah, I'm not office, but for school board that you would make, that it makes a difference? What kind of difference that you could make?
Well, uh, fortunately enough, being in New Jersey, um, I spent time officiating football and uh also served helping helping out the schools over there. So when you see things in a different, in a different area, and I mean, I don't know if anybody knows, but Texas is listed as the number twenty-six ranked school system in the nation. Uh, New Jersey is in the top ten. Uh, so to see things and experience differences and to talk with kids, talk with staff and want to bring those things to our school system, man, I think that that's that's different. Sometimes, you know, you can't, you can't do everything while being here. You have to go away and see new things and then bring that back. Um, that's what we do on trainings, that we we do on Zoom sessions and everything else that goes along with that. Um, but just first and foremost, I mean, I I'm I'm progressive. I if if I know that something, something works, that's good. How can we make it more effective? How can we make it more efficient? But also, I mean, it's just the climate of kids uh just in today's society, and this is not specific to Beaumont, but this is just universal, is that kids, I mean, we're new, we're millennials, we we want to know why? Why do we have to do these things? And um, you know, you can't just tell me just because I said so. You can't just say, okay, what we gonna do with this old way because this the way we been doing it? No, they they want new, they want effective, they want efficient, you know, we're we're data and analytical driven, um, and we always want the new things. And if we want to keep these kids, and I mean really keep them, then we got to make sure that we reach, uh, we meet them where they are.
Okay, uh, where's my girl Frances?
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, well, you know what I might want to do now that we've been here for about thirty-six minutes? Let's go to the to the comment board and see what we have here. Uh, let's see here, great testing in the school, they are testing the school. Uh, Kevin Jackson said they are testing the schools right now. Let's see if we go to another one. It it is hard to change class sizes when when it is a teacher shortage. Do I, how are you gonna accomplish uh that? How can you defeat that, uh, that the teachers, that will be a teacher shortage?
There uh, maybe one, you 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 gotta make, you gotta make morale better. Uh, I think we can always uh look at pay and say, man, pay the teachers more or they're gonna stay. And it's like, well, you'll be paying all day because it it end up being competitive. Uh, however, you just gotta change the morale for teachers. You gotta make, you gotta make them feel valued and feel like they uh and gotta make them want to be either. I think one of the biggest things that we should implement in our budget is making sure that we do monthly teacher appreciations. You know, we we shouldn't only celebrate a teacher at the end of the year them every month and that should be implemented in every school's budget. I I I I think ten fifteen dollars, sometimes when I wanna 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 treat somebody, I go out and I give them a meal. And that's what we should be doing with. Uh, we should also be uh encouraging outings, you know, sponsored outings where we have business partners who have events, why why we don't utilize them in this capacity? You know, teacher morale needs to be brought up tremendously and also I will say a better contract for them.
Yes, that's good. I like that. Uh, you said the right word, a better contract for them as well. We do need our teachers and we I'm I'm, we need our teachers and we need them uh because that is a shortage of teachers. Let me get back on the screen. I'm sorry, I'm working on some other things for our show that shows that's going on that's is near. So I, hey, woman, you know that you, that's one thing we need to do is help the teachers. Now, that's gonna be a lot of money coming to the schools and with the the new COVID-nineteen bill that just passed, that the uh the president will be signing on his desk by Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. So that's gonna send a lot of money to the locals and the locals' cities and the local districts, school districts in the state and that would help out in helping those who are the teachers, you know, and give them better pay, uh, better working conditions, making sure they get their COVID-nineteen uh vac- vaccinations. So you you coming in at the right time, um, Stacy and 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 I hope you do your best in what you do. So I'm gonna go back to this again, I'm gonna go back to the comment board here. If uh Frances doesn't have anything she needs to ask, I'm gonna go back to the comment board.
Well, I just wanted to basically make a comment, um, kind of piggybacking off of what Tony stated a few moments ago. It's good to have someone that does have a heart uh for our students. You you really just don't see that as much as you used to. Um, so it is refreshing to know because I do have a student um in B I S D. She currently attends Westbrook High School and um there, you know, there has been some challenges with teachers and the loss of talent with some of our teachers. So again, that's refreshing to know that um your your angle is the students, but yet also the teachers to make sure it is a happy and a healthy learning environment for them. And also with the a new aspect um about forward thinking um for our students, just some of the innovative things that you sound as if you're going to implement for our students to want to stay here in Beaumont um and have a great life that we know that they can have and get a very um a good education.
Absolutely. And I want to add this one piece to it. Um, uh, another big thing to me is also making sure that we employ the talents of our kids while they're in school now. We gotta change the way, uh, we gotta change the academic experience of them. Uh, we we we're so fortunate to have kids that are so advanced in things like like TikTok, uh, social media, communications and things like that. And why should we have, why should we wait until after they graduate to find out that all, that this is what you possess? Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, that we should be, we should be using that and I should see them flooded on B I S D social media, B I S D content. I mean, the to hear from staff, employees, that's great, you know, to hear, to see what they can do, but I want to hear about, like, I want to see the taste arsenals and we just had some, uh, we just had uh one individual who got four scholarships in Notre Dame coming out of early college. You know, I I I wanna, I wanna hear them, I wanna hear their voice. And the, I mean, just simple things, also creating a council of students. And I mean, they can be very diverse, bringing together uh Westbrook Early College and also Beaumont United, so they can actually tell us, man, what what are great ideas? Um, this is how, this is how we actually usher in the next generation because they're gonna hear from their their peers that, man, we should do this, we should do this. And then they're gonna brainstorm those ideas and bring it for somebody like Beaumont School Board. That way, we never stay stagnant. How can we stay stagnant when you have so many fresh young minds? That doesn't make any sense to me. I don't have to know about all the ideas because all I need to make sure that I do is that I give power to those who are actually in it. And that's the same thing when we were, when we were on the on the job force. Uh, those those who know that they're not in management, they they want to be heard. And it's the same way for the kids. We make every decision for the kids, but do we ask the kids, what do they want?
Well, Stacy, uh, I'm gonna ask one last question and we're going to take it to a close, but uh, uh, what, we have the number one um local high school basketball team, the Beaumont United uh Timberwolves, the number one team in the in the state of Texas. And half of the Beaumont don't do not even know this. And what I'm saying, they're they're not getting the the publicity that they should be getting and the credit they should be getting. And that is one thing I would ask you, once you elected as a school board member, to to bring this out, let's let's expose what our, the good in our children.
The positive.
The positive part of our kids. And we we want to see more of that. Uh, I I look in the paper and see the one little paragraph, but we're talking about the number one state ranked state team in the state of Texas. So I want you to keep that in mind and 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 put that on your back burner, but we need to more, you can see, they they report, they they make a big article when they have the negative part about it, but they never make the bigger articles about the goodness of these kids.
Absolutely.
So let's, 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 if once you're on board, let's make sure we make these kids, uh, this, let's expose those kids for the things they do that's been good, not just the bad. You agree?
Absolutely, a positive reinforcement.
Right. Well, Stacy Lewis, everybody who is running for District Two, uh, Beaumont Independent School District, it has been, we've been chopping it up for the last forty minutes and uh we appreciate you Stacy for joining us. I'm sorry, I was, I'm behind on the scheduling, I'm behind on our podcast and that's upcoming and I apologize that I wasn't on the screen as much as I should be, I should have been, but you're welcome to come back anytime, we're gonna support you, you're a good kid. I think you're a wonderful young man that has the ambitious and desires to be a good uh a working member, a working member of our school board that can help change and turn things around. Uh, Frances, is there, you know, last word from you?
Yeah, um, again, piggybacking off what you said and I stated this earlier during your interview session, um, it is good and it's also refreshing uh to hear some of your point of views and some of the things that you plan on implementing uh for our youth and to keep them engaged and keep them um wanting more of Beaumont. So we're blessed to have you.
We are glad to have you, Stacy.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are. And uh, I want to even want to check out our new website, do you, if you missed the show, you could go back to our, you can go online and and view us again and watch the show or listen to the show on uh www.knowledgeispowerpodcast.live, where where all the shows, all episodes of our shows are there. If you missed a show, you want to go back, you want to go back and share, share with everyone. Also, I want to remind you guys again that uh, at www.texasrentrelease.com, you can register for uh and landlord, tenants and landlord can register to receive monies that is due to you to prep for rent. And a lot of, lot of landlords that's out there uh who uh that needs they money to pay their mortgage so that you can live uh in your your home and they need to get paid too. So uh for the tenants that has not paid or behind in their rent or about to be evicted, uh, you can go to www.texasrentrelease.com or call one eight three three uh text TX rent, uh, one eight three three nine eight nine seven three six eight. So don't forget that. Also, on Thursday, we will announce our our next guest for Thursday. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Tuesday. We also have a guest for Tuesday that'll be on our show as well. And uh, so with that said, uh, Stacy, you had the last words, sir. You got the last word.
Oh, Stacy.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before we go, um, are you in need of any volunteers or if someone wants to donate to your campaign, how do they do so?
Yes, um, so anybody who wants to support the campaign, you can reach me on uh Facebook, Instagram, uh, all things is four District Two and four into our book normal call, elect Stacy Lewis Junior. Um, you can reach me on my personal page, Stacy Lewis Junior. Anybody who wants to support the uh campaign, Cash App, uh, will be S L D, B I S D. Phone number's four zero nine four nine nine six five seven eight. Reach out to me, shoot me a text, let me know what's going on. Uh, how can you uh be a part of this change? I'm number one on the ballot, number one in your hearts and number one for the job and the powers and the people and I need everyone to come out to vote April nineteenth.
All right, Stacy Lewis, guess what I have for you, Stacy? How about that? That's the guy, vote for Stacy Lewis Junior. B I S D School Board District Two, fighting for our community. We appreciate you, Stacy. We're glad to have you again, as I was saying earlier. And please, everyone, join us, that's Knowledge is Power Podcast Live every Sunday, Tuesday and also this month, every Thursday. So we'll see you the next time. God bless.
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.